You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Special meeting of the Branford RTM is called to order on October 30th, 2025 at 6:31 PM. We will open with a call, I call the meeting to order, and we will recite the pledge. Please begin now.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, there you go. Almost in harmony.
That sounds, that sounds better when we're in the room, guys.
Okay, let's have a call of the roll. Frank, Mr. Toohill, can you take it away?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Representative Adams.
Here.
Representative Edelman.
Representative Edelman here.
Representative Alphon.
Representative Alphon here.
Representative Amore.
Representative Amore here.
Representative Anderson. Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson's here.
Representative Basile.
Representative Basile is here.
Representative Black. Representative Black. Okay, we'll come back. Representative Bonnenberger.
Representative Bonnenberger is here.
Representative Brooks.
Representative Brooks is here.
Representative Dayhill.
Representative Dayhill is here.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson is present.
Representative Greenberg.
Present. Representative Greenberg present, sorry.
Representative Hartwell.
Representative Hartwell is here.
Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw is here.
Representative Heinz. Okay, I'll come back. Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham is here.
Representative Keefe. Representative Larson.
Representative Larson is present.
Oh, Keefe is, Keefe is absent. Thank you, Representative Larson. Representative Lefredo. I'll come back. Representative Mareska.
Representative Mareska is here.
Representative McCall. Representative McCall. I'll come back. Representative McCormick.
Representative McCormick is here.
Representative Nuppani. Representative Nuppani. I'll come back. Representative Papalizio.
Representative Papalizio is in the house.
Representative Sharkey.
Representative Sharkey is here.
Representative Shresta. Representative Shresta. I'll come back. Representative Sumro.
Representative Sumro is here.
Representative Toohill, here. Representative Verderam.
Representative Verderam is here.
Representative Waterman.
Representative Waterman's here.
And ex-officiales, Lisa Arpin, our town clerk, is present. Is there any other ex-officiales present tonight?
I didn't see anybody, Frank.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now to go back to those that didn't, didn't reply. Representative Heinz, absent. Representative Lefredo, absent. Representative McCall, absent. Representative Nuppani, absent. Representative Shresta, absent. Okay, despite the absences, there is a quorum, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Toohill.
You're welcome.
Okay, just as a reminder, this is a special meeting. The only business to be conducted is that is, that which is listed on this agenda. So we will begin with item three. This is a resolution, a bonding resolution, which was voted on and approved by the Board of Finance on Monday, October 27th. I will read the summary. I also received it as correspondence from the Finance Director. So, "To consider and if appropriate, approve and adopt the following resolution. A resolution amending, resolution authorizing an appropriation of $600,000 for the Branford High School roof and skylight replacement project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds and in an amount not to exceed 600,000, therefore, to amend the scope of the project and increase the appropriation and bond authorization therein by an additional $10,900." But 10 million, 900,000 dollars. The full text is of the resolution is on file and open to the public inspection in the office of the Town Clerk. I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading of the full resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Both moved.
Okay. Second, Representative McCormick. Okay, all in favor of waiving the reading of the full bonding resolution? Please raise your hands. Do I see everybody's hand? That's, okay. All right, it looks like we have a majority of those hands being raised. Okay, so we will not read the full resolution. And again, I remind you that it is on file in the Town Clerk's office.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Just want to point out that Representative Shresta is now with us.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Toohill, you got it? Okay.
I got it, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay.
Madam Moderator, this is Town Clerk Arpin. Will you read the motion to waive the reading, please? They didn't state their name, and the second did not state their name.
Representative McCormick was the second, I think it was Mr. Toohill.
Yeah, that's correct.
Who moved it, the waving of the reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any abstentions? I didn't see any. Nobody, nobody indicated, I'm sorry, I don't think there were any abstentions. I should have asked, I'm sorry. Okay, so we...
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Can I make, can I make a motion at this time that we waive Rule 441 to hear this, this item on the floor tonight as it wasn't heard in subcommittee?
Okay, we have a motion to suspend reading of Rule 441? I mean, the reading of the, suspending Rule 441? Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Hartwell seconds.
Okay, we have a second for Mr. Hartwell? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. This will be, I don't know whether should be a roll call vote on this? Because it's hard to...
Go ahead. Yeah, I just have, just have a point of, point of information. So, at this point on the floor, we do have the motion. It was made, you know, by Representative Brooks, seconded by Representative Hartwell. Is this for item three, the resolution? Or is it for the beginning of, you know, of the work at number four? Please.
Through you, through you, Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Brooks.
I made the motion just for item number three. I can leave it that way, or I can amend it for all of the items. I'll leave that up. I'll leave it up.
How about if we, we do it for the bonding resolution first, and we'll come back and seek a second motion to waive Rule 441 for the balance of the agenda? Can we do it that way?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a second for waiving Rule 441 for the bonding resolution. We, and so let's have a vote. I guess I would encourage you to use the, the raised hand emoji so we can have a good count. So if everybody in favor of waiving Rule 441 would raise the hand through their React button, so Mr. Toohill can count. Some of them are floating by. Not sure why.
You can't, you can't use the thumbs up, guys. That just goes by. You have to use the...
You'll have to use the hand. Raise the hand.
Okay, thank you. I count 24 in favor, zero against?
Okay, I guess we have unanimous, or we have approved the waiving of Rule 441, so we will open the floor for discussion. The bonding resolution is for an ambitious project at the high school. And I, having no committee chairs to call on, I think I saw Dr. Tranberg in, in the audience. Is, can we get you to speak to the, this need for this money?
Absolutely.
There he is, hi.
Hello, thank you, everyone. On behalf of the Board of Ed, I really appreciate everyone on short notice coming out on this night, especially if you don't have power. Thank goodness for generators and Wi-Fi, because maybe you still have that going on. So thank you, we really appreciate it. The reason for this change in timeline is we, we recently found out that there is a materials delay, specifically on the glass for the skylight system that we will need this summer. And if we waited until the next regular RTM meeting, we would lose almost two months of time in procuring the materials that we need, which would potentially jeopardize the project getting done next summer. And as this body has known, we've been talking about this project for a significant amount of time, and we can't really delay another year without replacing the roof system overall. This is coupled with, as you know, we had our Master Facilities Plan project that was completed, and we have some critical needs at the high school. And those critical needs are, they're so pressing that we really can't wait to do the high school renovations and the seven phases that was proposed. And because the roofing project was already happening, and a building committee will be formed, there's an opportunity for some of these other projects to be reimbursable through non-priority grants. And the non-priority grant amount reimbursement for Branford, it was 37%, 37% by right in the last cycle, but it's 35%, I think is the newest amount that, that was just published. So that means that we are eligible for a 35% reimbursement on the roof and some of the other projects that are listed. The dollar amount for some of the other projects doesn't quite meet the threshold of what we would usually complete a non-priority grant for. But because we have the building committee established, it makes sense to potentially get this 35% back on hundreds of thousands of dollars, even though the numbers aren't as big as, as we typically would expect. The other piece that's happened is we've, we've just done an incredible job as a district, and a special thank you to Brendan Letty. Brendan's on, so he can hop on and fill in any blanks in just operationalizing a huge amount of capital in his short tenure here. And Blaze has worked very, very closely with Jim and Jamie on this plan in order to, to have a feasible timeline that, that's manageable. Blaze and Jim, they may or may not be dialing on. They're both representing us at the Branford Community Foundation event tonight. So contextually, that's the ask. In addition to the roof, there is a need for HVAC, which you'll see in our capital budget for FY '27. There will be an ask, but right now, the HVAC in the F-Wing is partially failed and pretty close to completely failing, and it will be a challenge to even get through this winter. There's also fire life safety system concerns, and those systems are nearing failure as well. And then we have some of the plumbing, electrical, and ceiling replacement, while right now, those may or may not be reimbursable. So when you see the resolutions later on in the agenda, the reason everything is worded the way it is, is it's because that is the exact language that's required by the state for these non-priority grants. And you'll see lots of "may" or "may not", and that just gives us the flexibility when we know information. If we, if, and solar is a great example. This gives us permission to do solar, if that's the path to pursue. And if we don't have the permission to do this through the resolutions, then we can't apply for the grants. The, the application of these grants requires the RTM specifically to, to approve these in order for the projects to happen. And the others, as you can see, are pretty self-explanatory. Just some flooring, ceiling tiles are in disrepair at the high school specifically. Brendan, is there anything you want to add that I didn't cover with the basic overview?
No, I, I think, I think you did a good job. They, these are, you know, basic needs. As Dr. Tranberg mentioned, these are just specific infrastructure to hold the building up. You know, our roof is failing. 22 different sections of roof at the high school. That, that's in all 22 sections are either at end of life or in catastrophic failure. The life safety, life safety systems we have in the building, while they are compliant and we work regularly with the fire department, they're 36 years old at best. So we need, we need some upgrades with our panels. With, we've remained compliant with some of our smokeheads and pull stations, but the panels themselves are really out of compliance and need to be, need to be updated. They've recently caused some false alarms, you know, throughout, a couple of false alarms throughout the building in several different stages, resulting in obviously a need for the fire department to reply, and thus their resources are, could be utilized elsewhere during that time. So, and, and some of the other things just kind of, you know, they make sense. A lot of portions of this building came together in three different phases, 58, 78, and 98. So at best, you know, some of these infrastructure systems haven't been addressed since 1998. So there, there's a critical need for, for this, this work to, to happen.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the Public Book, BPS or BOE want to speak? Okay, then I'll open the floor to members for, to address their questions or comments.
Point of, I'd just like to raise a point of procedure, Madam Moderator. Would you please give me the names of those that moved this resolution? And, because I, I don't think we did that. I mean, I mean, the last ones, the last ones to make a resolution were Representative Brooks and Representative Hartwell.
That was for waiving Rule 441 for, for this.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Madam Moderator, this is Representative Brooks. I make a motion that we approve the resolution as it appears on the call.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Is, we have a roll call vote in number four. Mr. Toohill, are you ready?
Already, Madam Moderator.
Go ahead.
Madam, Madam, Madam Moderator, before we do that, let's just make sure that there is nobody else that wants to speak on this matter, whether it's in the body or in the public.
Well, that's, I had started there, so let's, let's do that. Are there any questions for Mr. Letty, or Dr. Tranberg, or comments, or anything that wants to be addressed by members of the RTM? If you, please raise your hand with the symbol if, if it's there. Mr. Frank, I don't see anybody with a hand raised.
All righty. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Madam Moderator, I did raise my hand.
Okay, I don't say, all right. Representative Toohill. I mean, Toohill, Everson, I'm sorry. I was looking at your hand.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Representative Everson.
Yeah, I got you.
I will be voting in favor of this. This is a little unusual to have this expedited matter before us, but we have all been aware that this is a great need at the high school. And it's necessary to put Branford in the best fiscal position possible by also allowing the school district to go out and do the grant proposals. So the timing of this is crucial. And again, I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Everson. Again, anybody else wishing to speak or have a question? Please raise the hand in the React screen. Let me see. Okay, I'm just double checking. I don't see any hands raised. So now we have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Mr. Toohill, are you ready?
All set, Madam Ira.
You're still all ready, go ahead.
Representative Adams.
Approve.
Representative Edelman.
Representative Edelman votes yes.
Please remember to state your names.
Representative Alphon.
Representative Alphon, yes.
Representative, I'm, sorry. Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson votes yes.
Representative Basile.
Representative Basile votes yes.
I believe Representative Black is still absent.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Representative Bonnenberger votes yes.
Representative Brooks.
Representative Brooks votes yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Representative Dayhill votes yes.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson votes yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Representative Hartwell votes yes.
Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Representative Ingraham votes yes.
Representative Larson.
Representative Larson votes yes.
Representative Mareska.
Representative Mareska votes yes.
Representative McCormick.
Representative McCormick votes yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Representative Papalizio votes yes.
Representative Sharkey.
Representative Sharkey votes yes.
Representative Shresta.
Representative Shresta votes yes.
Representative Sumro.
Representative Sumro votes yes.
Representative Toohill, yes. Representative Verderam.
Representative Verderam votes yes.
Representative Waterman.
Representative Waterman votes yes.
All present in favor, Madam Moderator.
Okay, so the vote carries, the resolution is approved. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next nine items on the agenda refer to three different aspects of this request. The first is, the, for, the three refer to the replacement for the roof and skylight. The grant, and the seven through nine refer to the solar project. And items 10 through 12 represent the F-Wing HVAC project. They will be read into the record for, for the purposes of compliance. And I will ask Dr. Tranberg to speak to them, or whoever is the best from, from the board. I will read them first, and then I think we will have a motion to pass them as a uniform, I mean, altogether at one time. So I'm going to read them, each, each of the nine going down. Number four, "Resolved that the representative town meeting authorizes the Branford Board of Education to apply for the, to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof and skylight replacement project at Branford High School. Resolved that the Public Building Commission is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the roof and skylight replacement project at Branford High School. Number six, "Resolved that the representative town meeting hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof and skylight replacement project at Branford High School. Number seven, "Resolved the representative town meeting authorizes the Branford Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the solar project at Branford High School. Resolved that the Public Building Commission is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the solar project at Branford High School. Number nine, "Resolved that the representative town meeting hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the solar project at Branford High School. Number 10, "Resolved that the representative town meeting authorizes the Branford Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the F-Wing HVAC project at Branford High School. Resolved that the Public Building Commission is hereby, hereby established as the building committee with, with regard to the F-Wing HVAC project at Branford High School. And finally, "Resolved," number 12, "That the representative town meeting hereby authorizes at least the preparation, excuse me, of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the F-Wing HVAC project at Branford High School."
Madam Moderator, this is Representative Henshaw.
Yes, Mr. Henshaw.
I would like to ask unanimous consent that we discuss and vote on these nine items, as numbers four through 12, as a block with the understanding that a vote positive is a vote for each one individually.
Okay, we have a motion to, for unanimous consent?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Excuse me, a point of procedure. I mean, I would recommend the very first item to, you know, move all these items together is to, you know, to make a motion, you know, to waive Rule 441.
Oh, sorry, yes, I meant to do that. Okay, well, before we open discussion then, and before we entertain that motion, I need a motion to waive Rule...
Madam Moderator, I make the motion that we waive Rule 441 on items four through 12.
Okay, we have a motion on waiving Rule 441.
Representative Hartwell seconds.
And we have a second. So Frank, you have that?
I do.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands by the emoji, by the emoji in the React button. Okay. Trying to get... Please try to use that emoji if you can.
I don't know where mine is on this, to tell you the...
Oh, okay, or that happens sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay, just keep your hands up. Okay. You counting, Frank? You got everybody?
Well, I mean, the iPhone...
Representative Greenberg, ask for the no's.
I'm looking, I'm sorry. You'll have to count for me, because I'm, I have an...
All right, I got it.
I have an iPhone, and it doesn't show.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Representative Greenberg, are you yay or nay? Representative Alphon and Representative Greenberg? Okay, we have, so I think we have 22 without you, Frank. So any nays, any, any, please take your...
Representative Alphon is yes.
Is he yes, okay.
Representative Greenberg is yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. So it looks to me, without your vote, Mr. Toohill, we have a unanimous approval.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Okay.
So the count, so the count, the total count would be 23 to nothing.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right, that motion to suspend Rule 441 carries? Okay, Representative Henshaw, second chance.
Yes, again, I would like to ask unanimous consent that the RTM consider the discussion and the vote on items four through 12 as a block with the understanding that your vote represents an individual vote for each of those items individually. If we don't have unanimous consent, if anybody objects, then we will have to treat each one individually with a roll call vote for each one, each one of those nine individually. So the question is...
Representative Ingraham seconds, then.
Okay, we have a second?
It just requires one nay. Does anybody object?
Does anybody? Representative Bonnenberger, you have your hand raised. Are you asking a question, or? Oh, there goes, okay.
I'm being deficient.
All right, I think you're, for the sake of efficiency, is anybody opposed to treating these as a block and approving them all at once by a roll call vote? Let me either hear from you or see your hand raised. Going once, going twice. Anybody wish to abstain? Let me hear from you or have your hand raised. Mr. Toohill, I don't see... Mr. Toohill, I don't see any hands for either of those, so that we have the motion to approve them as a block by roll call vote, meaning one vote approves all nine, is, carries. Dr. Tranberg, are you still here?
I'm still here.
Okay, there you are. You, you alluded to these, is there anything you want to say about the wordings?
I'll just reiterate, this is required language from the state to have these three resolutions for each item. The RTM has to be the authorizing body, and the money has to be allocated and in hand in order to apply for the grants. You can apply for non-priority grants the first 10 days of, of each month.
Okay.
The thing, I mean, I just wanted to say that I would recommend, just so everything, you know, doesn't get kicked back in the future, everything is right, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, what I would suggest is that we take an actual roll call vote.
Oh, yes.
We need it, yes.
We will have a roll call vote, as, as I called for, but that roll call vote, everybody will be voting with the understanding that one roll call vote with your vote on record will be to approve all nine of these resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Anybody who does not understand that or agree with it? Okay, so we have Dr. Tranberg's explanation, are there any questions or comments for him or for the floor from the RTM?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Hartwell.
We're asking for money from the state. We obviously need to vote in, in favor of these resolutions and, and move this along.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak from the RTM? Hearing no takers, anybody from the public wish to speak to this? All right, hearing no requests for comment, Mr. Toohill, go ahead with your roll call vote.
Representative-
Again, this is to approve all nine resolutions.
Yep. Representative Adams.
Representative Adams votes yes.
Representative Adelman.
Representative Adelman, yes.
Representative Alphon.
Representative Alphon, yes.
Representative Anderson.
Representative Anderson votes yes.
Representative Basile.
Representative Basile votes yes.
Representative Bonnberger.
Representative Bonnberger votes yes.
Representative Brooks.
Representative Brooks votes yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Representative Dayhill votes yes.
Representative Everson.
Representative Everson votes yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Representative Greenberg, yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Representative Hartwell, yes.
Representative Henshaw.
Representative Henshaw, yes.
Representative Ingram.
Representative Ingram, yes.
Representative Larson.
Representative Larson, yes.
Representative Mareska.
Representative Mareska votes yes.
Representative McCormick.
Representative McCormick votes yes.
Representative Nupani. Representative Papalizio.
Representative Gino Papalizio votes yes.
Representative Sharkey.
Representative Sharkey votes yes.
Representative Schressla.
Representative Schressla votes yes.
Representative Sumro.
Representative Sumro votes yes.
Representative Toohill votes yes. Representative Verderam.
Representative Verderam votes yes.
Representative Waterman.
Representative Waterman votes yes.
It passed, Madam Moderator, 23 to nothing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, before I call for a motion to adjourn, I just want to thank everybody for, for arranging their schedules at this hectic time for this meeting and that we could pull it off, and aren't we glad that we didn't have to go out in the rain to meet, eat on this, and you know what they say, the Godfather, right? Just when we thought we were out, they pulled us back in, so, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Representative-
I'll second that, Representative Everson.
Okay, Representative Everson, all in favor?
Yeah, we can just leave.
Bye. Bye, everybody, have a great weekend, good luck on Election Day.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.